Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Cedar Falls Board of Education with a reminder that the actions taken this evening will focus on our students and their achievement. We have a board member that's not able to be here tonight, so I'd like to read a statement. "A governmental body may conduct a meeting by electronic means only in circumstances where such a meeting in person is impossible or impractical and/or only if the governmental body provides public access to the conversation of the meeting to the extent reasonably possible. The place of the meeting is the place from which the communication originates and the minutes of the meeting shall include a statement explaining why the meeting in person was impossible or impractical as pursuant to Iowa Code 21.8. This meeting is being held by electronic means due to personal reasons." So Jenny Leeper is on the phone with us this evening. All right, moving on to Item B on the agenda, the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
It's been moved. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any questions or comments regarding the consent agenda? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Public comment this evening. We have two individuals that would like to speak to the board. Mr. Skane, would you be willing to come up to the microphone, please?
August 29th, I had the pleasure of attending the League of Women Voters Forum for the candidates for the Cedar Falls School Board. It was good to listen to the high-quality candidates who wanted to serve the people of Cedar Falls. The word quality is so important because the people of Cedar Falls strive for quality in all its institutions. They want the school board to provide quality education for its students. They want the city government to provide quality services. They want the University of Northern Iowa to provide quality educational opportunities, not only for those of us who live in Cedar Falls, but to the people of Iowa and across the globe. They want the Cedar Falls Utilities to provide quality dependable services. The people expect and deserve quality from all government institutions. But what is quality? Where do we find, where do we need to find quality? I remember my elementary education. I grew up in Monongahela, Pennsylvania. We lived outside of town and I attended Wiley Elementary. It was a two-story building that had six grades. Grades one through three were on the bottom floor and four through six on the top floor. The facilities were not great, but I received a quality education because of Mrs. Guzeppa. Mrs. Guzeppa was my teacher in the fourth, fifth, and sixth grade. It was from her that I developed a passion for learning. I'm convinced that I would not have gone on to a career in education if it had not been for the skills and passion for learning that she instilled in me. One quality teacher in a country school made the difference at that formative stage of my life. Along the way, I have other outstanding teachers, but Mrs. Guzeppa was the first. I tell this story because I have also seen situations where the facilities were of high quality, but the teachers and staff in the classrooms were not. Cedar Falls is fortunate to have both: quality teachers and staff and quality facilities. Of the two, quality teachers and quality facilities, having quality teachers and staff is by far the more important. If you can't have both, having quality teachers and staff is vital. Today in Cedar Falls, our governmental institutions are faced with financial challenges. Resources at the state level have been reduced and our institutions have been forced to make cuts in the services they provide, especially in essential services. What do we need to do in these difficult financial situations? We need to renew our traditional community decision-making. Government bodies have moved away from communal decision-making. Too often, decisions are made that benefit one institution at the expense of the others and at the expense of the people. Government institutions need to work together. We need to have open forums that bring all institutions and the people together to determine the priorities for Cedar Falls. We know that not all needs can be met. The resources are just not there. People know this and want everyone to work together. If we work together in the spirit of community decision-making, we can retain quality in the priority services as we face the ongoing financial challenges. I appreciate this opportunity to speak to you tonight.
Thank you, Dr. Skane.
Thank you. Mr. Wykoff?
Good evening, Andy and Joyce and board members. Two weeks ago, I was up here and asked about the safety outfit for the kids at Southdale. Is there any follow-up on that that could be related now or do I sit or?
Well, if that's the question, then we'll address it as soon as public comments.
Okay. And then, secondly, I asked, what is the max or are we at the max on what we can borrow for new facilities? Because that seems to be a, out talking to citizens this week, how can we be able to do anything more for expenditures in Cedar Falls? I was out looking at the new school this weekend and, yeah, it does look very nice. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, moving on to communications. Arlo.
Hi. Okay. So, we are currently still in the midst of our food drive. We finished our promotion with Chick-fil-A last week and we did not win that competition. I think we had a geographic disadvantage, but we still got a $500 check for that, which will go to our food drive. So, we really appreciate that promotion and that opportunity we were given. And we want to thank everyone who ate there last week and mentioned Cedar Falls. So, our next big event in the community coming up is trunk or treat, which will be held this Sunday, October 29th, in the south parking lot. So, everyone is welcome to bring kids and come trick or treat and it should be a really fun day. We are also doing a promotion with Pizza Ranch on November 6th. And so, once again, if you come and eat there that night and say you're with CF, we can get some money for our food drive, so that'll be great. Some of the other food drive events going on, just for general interest, we have an ultimate frisbee tournament that senior leadership is putting on and that's been really fun so far. And powder puff volleyball is happening tonight in the gym at 7:00, so that'll be fun, too. And one thing that I'm really excited about is that I feel like our school really excels in both academics and athletics and the arts. So, in terms of athletics, our football team is going on to the playoffs. The first playoff game will be held this Friday, the 27th, at Wortburg College. And in terms of our arts, the All-State Music Festival auditions were held this weekend. And as usual, Cedar Falls is doing incredibly well. We had a lot of kids from band and orchestra and choir make it. And that's a really big deal for those students, so that's awesome. And then, coming up, the school fall play, which is two one-acts. One is called "I Never Saw Another Butterfly" and the other one is "The Complete Works of William Shakespeare Abridged." Those will be held on Friday and Saturday, November 10th and 11th, at 7:30 in the auditorium. So, if I have any questions?
Any questions?
I do. Could you give us some details on, to the community, about how you can get somebody canned?
Oh, okay. So, this is a really fun promotion that we've been starting this year and I think it's been going really well so far. So, we have a toilet bowl that, completely clean, that has been making the rounds in various people's yards. So, if you see the toilet in your yard, you've been canned and in order to get it removed and put in someone else's yard, you have to donate some money or cans to the food drive. And I know Dr. Pati has been canned and I take it some of you have also.
Joyce has?
I think it's still in my yard.
Okay.
With cans. So, who would we need to contact to have that happen? Because that's going through the 13th of November, right?
Yeah, I believe so. So, if you have a canning request, you could contact Mrs. Gardner.
At the high school?
Yeah.
Yes, okay.
And again, it's for a very good.
Good cause.
It's tremendous with the food drive and the work that our senior leadership and our student council does. It's fantastic. But I was surprised when I came home to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Arlo. Great job.
All right, do we have any other communications?
A couple of different components in response to some of the public comments and Mr. Wykoff's comments. I know at Southdale, where Mr. Wykoff, I think, two weeks ago talked about the safety of students, especially the ones that are doing the crossing guard work. We appreciate that. I know our principal has also addressed that and, in fact, there's now signage on the door that says, "Make sure you wear your safety vest when you go out." So, we've addressed that and we appreciate him bringing that to our attention and making sure that that's first and foremost of all of our thoughts, which is safety of students. Then, the maximum authority levied, we certainly can't go and get that number right now, but I just think the simple math, if we look at, you know, the first bond issue that was asked roughly four years ago was about $118 million. You subtract the $32 million bond that we had successful and passed, what, a year ago? You do the math on that, there's roughly about $80 million, $90 million of authority that we would have, that we'd be able to bond against and borrow against. I'm looking at Doug to verify because we did not discuss that question ahead of time, but it would be roughly in that $85 to $90 million range.
And of course, that number will change January 1st when the new assessed valuations come out, but we can calculate that number exactly as of assessed valuations today, but obviously, we're not going to vote yet in calendar 17, but we can get you that number.
I guess the only other thing that I would, just for clarification, as we're looking forward to that, the number-one way to alleviate the property tax burden for local people within the Cedar Falls School District would be if there's an extension of the SAVE option tax beyond 2029. That single event would alleviate a lot of the property tax burden within our community.
Yes, our hope would be, especially with that one cent sales tax extension, and there's talks that that hopefully will be done this legislative session. That was our one board priority that we passed this last August. And really, that would probably have a burden release of local property taxpayers of about $22 to $28 million, if not a little bit more, and pretty significant amount when you start looking at some of the facility needs that we have. I think back to Mr. Skane's comments, we are very fortunate. We have the best staff in the world. We know we have some really good facilities, but also some facility needs, and I think that's a win-win.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to E on the agenda, Secretary's Financial Report.
Well, I don't quite know how to follow Arlo's conversation about all the activities that are going on. I just hope I don't get canned after I give this report. But here's the monthly financials for the month of September. In the general fund, you can see we took in about $3.96 million, expended $4.17 million, so our ending fund balance is $1,778,000. And the management fund, $53,000 came in.
Doug, I'm sorry, for, it's easier to ask the question right now than.
All right.
Sorry, on the, so I noticed, if you could go back to that previous slide, that versus the balance last year, there's a pretty, is there a timing difference there? The balance last year was 4.?
You have to remember that last year, we received our TLC grant funding in August. That was $1.6 million. Starting this year, because it's not considered a grant, it is considered part of our monthly state aid payment. And they do that over nine months instead of 10. Categoricals are done over nine months, so we actually won't see the beginning of the categorical money coming in until September, or, excuse me, October.
Okay.
So, that's, that's part of the reason why there's a bit of a difference. And then, of course, the other part of the reason is that we've been trying to be very conservative with asking the property tax owners for cash reserve dollars. And we had that all, we had that discussion last spring when we set budget. And we're trying to build our cash up. That is as low as a cash balance we've had in September in a very, very long time.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Okay, now let's go to the management fund. You can see we had $53,000 come in and $7,000 come out. That we did receive a little bit of property tax money in September, and so that's part of it. And then, we also did receive a dividend through the ISB Safety Group. And that would be the combination of those two totaled to $53,000 on the revenue side. So, an ending balance of $442,000, very similar to where we were one year ago. And the capital projects fund, you can see a revenue of $54,900. That is all interest, by the way, that came in because there is no more other dollars coming into that front other than interest. And expenditures of $1.78 million, of course, those would be tied to the three elementary school projects. I wanted to note and highlight, we switched around some investment opportunities. We had some CDs come due and that's why the nice amount of revenue for the month. And you can see we've switched some CDs to Farmers Bank and they were a little bit better interest rate than what we were getting on the last batch, so that's, that's why that's highlighted there. And the one cent local option sales tax, a revenue of $800,000. For whatever reason, we received two payments again in September. If you'll recall, we received two payments in July and then we didn't have a payment in August. Now, we've received two payments in September. And so, that's why that's about double what the revenue would normally be in a month. You can see the expenditures out. The big one, the $218,000 is the transfer to Fund 40 for the debt service payment for the revenue sales tax bonds. One note, we did change a CD out as well in this fund, and you can see that we're with ICEJIT for that amount in at 1.5%. And I never would have thought I'd be jumping up and down in my seat when I could say I was getting 1.5% interest on CD.
And Doug, would you tell us what ICEJIT means, stands for?
It's the Iowa Schools Joint Investment Trust. And what ICEJIT is, it's sort of, it's managed through the Iowa Association of School Boards and they take a different investment opportunities that's public school districts may have and pool them and then they'll be able to maximize the investment return that we can receive. They're not always the highest because we do ask those ICEJIT to quote on every CD or every money market that we have come due, but they're becoming a little bit more competitive than what they had been in the past. And I was happy to see that.
Thank you.
So, you can see we have an ending balance of $7,561,000 and you can see what our balance was one year ago at this time. And the physical plant and equipment levy, a fairly quiet month, $108,000 in. That's almost all property tax. And the $573,000 out for cleaning up of the different construction projects that we have going on within the district. And our fund balance very, very close, $2.54 million compared to $2.39 million one year ago. Debt service fund, revenue, $76,000 come in. Again, we had some dollars that we had invested and that is where the majority of that revenue comes from, as well as property tax dollars that we're starting to receive in Fund 40 that makes, that will be making the debt service payments at the bonds that the district sold a year ago. And then, we have expenditures of nothing yet because those payments aren't due until December. So, our ending balance is $798,000 and change, and it's very similar to where we were one year ago. Activity fund, $121,000 in, $56,000 out. So, you can see we're just over $600,000. Fund balance very similar to the $587 from one year ago. Trust and agency account, pretty much a normal month of activity with ins and outs, and so our balance of $278,000, very similar to what it was one year ago. Food service of $176,760 in. And that, we have yet to receive any reimbursements from the federal or state level. That really starts flowing here now in October. And you can see our expenditures of $253,000, so our fund balance is just over $600,000 for the month. And then, the coffee shop fund for the, at the high school, you can see just under $7,500 for fund balance. And in the River Hills Consortium, no activities, and so the fund balance is zero. And I would entertain any other questions that the board would have on the financials.
Any questions for Doug?
I think this may have been asked before. North Cedar and their coffee shop, will that be dumped into something that we see currently?
When they get up, when it gets up and running, then we'll have to, we'll have to set up enough fund for them. We'll probably roll it into the high school fund and then just internally separate the two.
Great.
So, we may have to change the name. But once, once that gets up and rolling, yes, we'll have to be, we'll be accounting for those dollars as well.
Great.
And for people new to the board, there was a STEM Best Grant that was received last year for North Cedar and the students up there that would run their own coffee shop. In fact, they'd have, and they've developed their own coffee blend, working with a local vendor. So, it's really a neat concept and very exciting as that it will start to ramp up here in the near future.
Who will they serve?
Well, it's probably going to be anybody that would like to come. It's going to be typically before school, but a lot of it will be parents as well as they look to pick up and drop off.
We can go up.
They might have curbside.
All right. Any further questions? If not, we'll place the Secretary's Financial Report on file for audit. Thank you, Doug.
Thank you.
Moving on to F on the agenda, the informational reports, our annual, AYP, Annual Yearly Progress and the Iowa Assessments. Mr. Conrad and Mrs. Ziegler.
Thank you. So, we'll get started if you can pull that up. We appreciate the opportunity to come, as we do always, every year, about this time to talk about our assessment results from the spring of 2016 and '17. As you can imagine, Pam and I got together this afternoon. We arm wrestled to see who was going to take the lead and I lost. So, I guess I will be talking most of the time, but she gave me the clicker, so we'll try to move on through. Tonight, we're going to give you just a snapshot of our results. If we would try to give you a report on all of our grade levels, all of our subgroups for all of the assessment tests within the Iowa Assessments, we might be here till about 11:30. So, we'll, we'll give you some snapshots. We'll talk a little bit about how we analyze the results and show you some samples of what those look like, but just know that, that we dig into these, this data a lot more than what you're going to see tonight and are more than willing to share with you individually or at any other time with regards to the results that we have. We're proud of the results, but we also identify some things that we definitely know we want to work on as, as a school district as we move forward. So, if you could pull that up. Basically, just to give you a little quick background on the Iowa Assessments, it is our state assessment. The state requires us to assess all students in grades three through eight as well as 11. And we choose as a district to assess all of our students in grades three through 11. So, every grade level, with the exception of our 12th grade students, take this assessment every year. There are three basic, three exams that students take. There's a reading, a math, and a science assessment that students are assessed in that have to be reported to the state. We administer the assessment in the spring. You'll notice in a couple of the slides that there will be a line in there that back in 2011 and '12 and some of the historical data, the tests were revised at that time and it did impact student scores across the state. And so, we'll try to point that out to you when we get there and be, be able to see how we've reacted to that over the years as well. But more importantly, there's a new assessment coming our way. The state has made some decisions on that. They've recanted on some decisions on that and now we're, we're not sure exactly where we're at in the whole process. They have awarded the contract to a vendor. There's been an appeal of that vendor and so there's a process they have to go through before they really determine what is that assessment going to be. And we could talk a little bit about that further as we go.
It's the American Institute for Research and currently, 19 states have done online assessments through them this last year. And so, we have a little information, but not, not a large amount. And it's going to be in math, reading, and science again. And when they called for a proposal from the state, they were looking for things like, what is aligned to the Iowa Core standards right now? They looked at cost. They looked at an assessment that would provide both proficiency and progress. Like, the Iowa Assessment does the NSS now, so they want to look at just progress, not just proficiency. I'm trying to think, what else? Cost was a big factor. Also, it had to be a paper pencil assessment.
Along with an electronic. So, student, or schools would have the option of doing either paper pencil or an electronic assessment. So, as we move on, then, if this works, we really analyze our results in a number of different ways, but mainly they fall into three main categories on how we result, how we analyze the results. We look at cross-sectional cohorts, which is grade level, year to year, as students move through. For example, that's, if we would compare fifth grade every single year, that's an example of that cross-sectional cohort. That does compare different students from year to year. So, as students move through fifth grade, we look at what they did in fifth grade and then the next year, a new group moves into fifth grade and we analyze that. We also then look at what we call simple cohorts, and that's really analyzing the same groups of students over time. It compares those students as they progress through our system. So, as students move from third grade to fourth grade to fifth grade, we look at that same group of students and the focus really there is on growth. How do they grow from one year to the next year? And it also compares students in those, we look at three different levels of performance, whether they're proficient, whether they're non-proficient, or what they also call advanced proficiency. And so, we analyze where students fall into those three categories as well. And then, the third way that we analyze this data is what we call expected growth. And this is something the state started providing for us new in 2015. And that really was looking at students as to where they started the year before and, and they call it a band or a level of achievement in one year. And what did they do in, in, what's the expected growth for those students in that same band from one year to the next? And you'll see how that lays out a little bit as we grow. But the idea there is that even though students may be performing at a very low level one year, they give you some expected growth of those students for that next year. And we'll share a little bit more as we go through with that as well.
And with that, I'll just share, too, the state has provided a great resource tool for us called EdInsight. And usually, about a month after we take the assessment, the data is provided for us online and we can go in and we can look at those cohort groups. We can also do a matched cohort group, which is like the students who have been here over time, which is very helpful. And it also even breaks it into subgroups. So, it's a great resource because I remember doing that by hand and it sure saves a lot of time.
So, as we look at, you know, we'll just give you again some snapshots of where our students are. And this, this first couple of slides has to deal with our reading results from last year, looking at all grades or all students in grades three through 11. And you'll see a comparison with how our students compared with the students that are in our AEA, as well as the students across the state of Iowa. So, if you look, you know, basically, they determine whether the students are non-proficient, proficient, or advanced proficiency based on what they call an NADS-S score, which is a national standard score. And determined by that score would determine, and you can see here on this chart, for each grade level, they give a range of, of NSS scores to determine whether students are in that non-proficiency level, that proficiency, or the advanced proficiency level. And so, we start with that piece and are really, of course, on this next couple of slides, it's what percent of our students got into that proficiency level or above? So, if you look at, keep hitting it twice, keep going back and forth. This, this, I know it's tough to see, but this shows every single grade level. And you can see the green bar is the Cedar Falls students in each grade level. Blue is our AEA and the red is the entire state of Iowa. And you can kind of see, as you look at each of our grade levels, of course, our students, and this is, this is the average NSS score is what this chart is showing. And so, at every grade level, our students are performing above the AEA as well as the state in terms of their, their average scores on the NSS level. as well as the state, in terms of their, their average scores on the NSS level. This then breaks that down into proficiency and the percent of students proficient. So as you can see, at each grade level, again, the green bar is Cedar Falls. The blue is the AEA, and the red is the state. Again, our students are vastly more proficient. We have more students proficient, or a higher percentage of students proficient than any students in the AEA, as well as the state. Question, Jeff?
Back on figure one, just to, and maybe it's just a matter of, but why does grade 11 actually go down? Not only for us, but also for AEA, and goes down for, I mean, you see a nice progression all the way through. And then what happens in grade 11?
It's one of those great anomalies that we're always trying to figure out. A lot of it has to deal with motivation of those students at grade 11. Most of our students take the ACT test as an 11th grader. And so their focus at 11th grade is on the ACT and not necessarily on Iowa assessments. Even though a vast majority of our students still do well on that, the motivation, because there's, there's no tie into whether they graduate or not. There's no correlation to A, to the ACT test. So we do, we've seen each year usually a decline in the, in the, in the achievement levels of our students at 11th grade. And you'll see that again in another couple of slides down the road. Moving on, then, we'll have the same group of, of, of scores at, in our math. And again, the proficiency scores that the state has identified for non-proficient, proficient, advanced proficient, does change slightly for mathematics, as it does with science as well. So just because you've got a, a 150 in reading doesn't necessarily correlate to a 150 in math. You're, you're scored separately on each one of those. So again, you can look at the bar charts. I apologize for the number of, of different bars that are on here. But again, I think just from a pictorial standpoint, you can see again, at every grade level, our students in reading are, are, their average NSS is higher than the AEA and the state, as well as when we look at the percent proficient of our students. Again, we're, we're sitting there in that 88 to 90, 91% of our students being proficient in, in, in every grade level at, on their, on their math assi, assessments.
And that's why we spend a lot of time looking at the NSS scores, the, the chart before this, because we really want our kids to be growing even in the advanced. So we're looking at growth for students, not just percent proficient, but we want individual growth. It's kind of that student by student, skill by skill philosophy. Want to make sure all of our kids are growing.
And you'll be able to see that probably much more better in, in a couple of the slides we move down below. So and then in science, again, you've got the, the same proficiency scales, slightly different than reading and math. Again, though, very similar look to the reading and math achievement levels, where our students are performing or outperforming the AEA and the state. This is average NSS, and this is percent proficient. If you notice that across the state, as well as the AEA, there is a higher percent of students proficient in science than there are in, in reading and math. But you'll kind of see that as we move forward as well. So then, as Pam mentioned, you know, really what our focus is, is because of the number of, and the percent of our students that are in that proficient range, we really want to focus on growth. How are we growing from year to year to year as students move through our system? So again, we look at the sample, simple cohort growth, which looks through groups of kids as they pass through our system from year to year to year. We look at that average NSS scores, the percent of students that are proficient at each level. And then which of our students, as Pam said, we're not just concerned about proficiency, but how are we moving those students from proficient level to advanced proficiency level? And again, let me remind you that even though we're giving you this snapshot, we also analyze all of our subgroups as well, whether those students are in special needs, whether free and reduced lunch, whether the ethnicity. So every one of those subgroups also gets analyzed in all the same manner. We're just kind of showing you the, the all students piece of it as we go through. So if you look at the cohort by grade level, and this is a little different chart that the state provides for us, but it shows you the average NSS growth from year to year. And if you look at again, the bottom line that you see, or the bottom dash line, is the proficiency. So from year to year to year, you know, that proficiency, to achieve proficiency, you have to improve from year to year to remain proficient. You can see that each year, our NSS growth continues to be above because the vast majority of our students are proficient. You can also see then the, the average growth in NSS scores from year to year to year. And now, Jeff, this is where you can kind of see at that 11th grade level, every one of our students made positive growth, with the exception of 11th grade. And ironically, it was really only the one that we saw in, in reading. Because if you look at the math, we actually did have a growth at the 11th grade level. So, but you can kind of see, again, we're performing, outperforming, we're above that level of proficiency, and those students are growing at a higher level than, than what the expected growth of the state would, would be. Unfortunately, the state does not provide that same data for us for science. And so we tried to match up the science data with the data that we had, and it wasn't kind, kind of fitting with everything. So we decided not to include the cohort growth for that, for this year. Next, we kind of look at cohort growth by proficiency. And again, we look at a, a group of students that move all the way through our system, and what did they do every single year? And what percent of those students were either non-proficient, proficient, or advanced proficient every single year as they moved through the system? So this is a chart that shows reading for our recent, or this would be our current 12th grade class, because they were, they were actually assessed last year as 11th graders. So you can look at this cohort all the way back to third grade. And if you recall, earlier, I mentioned that in 2011 and 12, the test changed. And so you can see the black line in there right after students, that this class was in fifth grade, that test changed. You can look at the impact that it had on those student scores. The way to read this, of course, is the dark red at the bottom are the, the percent of students that are non-proficient. The lighter red is proficient. And then the real light red at the top is advanced proficiency. And as Pam mentioned earlier, we really want to look at not just proficiency level, but how are we getting kids into that high proficiency as well? And so you can see, you know, even though the test changed back in 2011, that also meant that a lot of our, our teaching strategies and our curriculum changed along with it because you can see the growth our students have had since that time. And we continue to see less and less students that are non-proficient and more students getting in that advanced proficiency level. You can also see the same data for math, for that same group of students, those 11th graders from last year, our current 12th graders. And again, you can kind of see, the thing again to remember is dark blue is bad, and real light blue is good. And lighter blue is really good, so. And then this is our science as well for that same cohort group coming through. So again, that's that simple cohort, just looking at students as they, groups of students as they move through our system. The expected growth, again, as we mentioned earlier, is what the state really started focusing on a couple of years ago. And so this has been a real good tool for us as we start trying to compare, what is that expected growth for students as they move through? And how are we doing on, on either reaching that expected growth or going beyond that expected growth? And again, what the state does is they, they have broken down students into, or I guess test results into five levels, or five categories, or what they call bands. And students will fall into those, and it basically looks at those in a national percentile rank. And then they determine what's the expected growth within each of those bands for those students as they move through the system. The thing that you take a look at, and you'll see in the charts, that if you're in one of those lower levels or those lower bands, we really need to focus on exceeding expected growth because we want students to catch back up. If they're in one of the lower bands, we have to work with them to really get beyond expected growth if, if they want to move up into a higher band. So as you can kind of see, the state has looked, has again, given us those levels and the expected growth for each of those levels. And I know this again is a little bit tough to see, but let me give you an example. If you have a student that at grade six was basically at a score of, let's see what that one is. Of 252, well, the state would say for that student to make expected growth next year, that same student would need to score a 267 on the NSS score to be able to meet expected growth. And so if they don't reach that score, then they, they have not met their expected growth for that particular grade level. So that gives you an example of what expected growth really is.
And it's a good example, too. If you look at, I think it's purple, the line on the bottom, that would be your students in like your 1 to 10th percentile. And you can see if the students that are already advanced keep growing, look at the gap that you would have at the very end, look at that 11th grade year. So that's why we need them to grow more NSS points in order to make sure that gap isn't as wide.
Our goal as a system would be to have no students in probably at least those bottom two levels. And that's what you'd really want. And so that would require students to make more than that expected growth from year to year so they can get out of that bottom level. So here's an example of how we analyze that. And you can kind of see here, and again, it's tough to see, but you can see the five bands, the five different groups there. The light pink would, would be what the expected growth is for that particular band. You can see what our average growth in that, or the students in that band were. So for example, if you look at the lowest level there, which is on the left-hand side, and down at the bottom, you see the N is 11. That means we had 11 students at that grade level that were in that bottom level. The expected growth of those students was five NSS points. The average growth of those students from grade seven to eight was actually 27. So those students have vastly exceeded their expected growth, which is what we want to see. And so really, when you look at this, in each of those grade levels, we want to see a distinct increase beyond that expected growth. And this, of course, would show that we did, with the exception maybe of those students at that highest level. But if you also look at the bottom again, you look at the vast majority of our students, when you look at that N, are in those top two, those top two levels. So, and it is more difficult to continue to make that expected growth the higher that you achieve, the higher level that you're in. This is that same group of students looking at their math versus the expected growth. It's not quite as pronounced as the reading was. But again, we're still meeting, you know, exceeding the expected growth, which is what we're trying to do from year to year to year. And then this is that same group of students in science. Again, you look at the low numbers of students that we have actually in those bottom two levels, but we continue to increase their average NSS much greater than the expected growth that, that they're required to by the state. And then, of course, we, we look at, was looking at how, what percent of our students are meeting that expected growth? When you lump all those students together, regardless of what band that they might be in, what percent of our students are making expected growth from year to year? And so you can see, this is a sample of what we do, and this happens to be science. The green at the bottom would be the percent of our students that actually met their expected growth from year to year, regardless of what level or what band that they were in. And you can see there that we, you know, with the exception of, of a couple of those, it's, it's not as, as pronounced as we would like it to be. You know, we have less students, or less percent of our students actually meeting that expected growth. A lot of those students are at that higher, those higher bands, those higher levels. So what we do, and you can see the short little line that's in each one of those bars, we set a goal for this year to try to increase those percentages by at least 3%. So our goal is to get more students meeting their expected growth, or at least a greater percentage of those students for next year, as we look at, at what one of our academic goals is for that piece of it. So when you throw everything together, you know, we, we continue to look at our scores and, and, you know, even though we compare ourselves to the AEA and the state, we look very, very good. But we want to compare ourselves with ourselves. We want students to look at themselves and their growth from year to year. Our overall non-proficient students continues to decrease, which is a huge goal. We have less students each year that, that are considered non-proficient. But again, proficiency isn't what our goal, it's high proficiency. And while there continues to be some gaps in proficiency between subgroups, we do see that gap shrinking. So our students that are in free, on free and reduced lunch, our ethnicity students, our, our students in special needs, we continue to see growth and a shrinking of gaps between those students from year to year. And again, our focus has been on the, the growth, not so much on proficiency levels and things like that. We really want to take kids where they are from one year and see what can we do between that one year and next year, and what's their growth. And like Pam said, we're really looking at student by student, skill by skill. And then finally, we mentioned this earlier, is the state assessments changing. So we don't know yet what impact that might have. We don't, we, we believe it'll have some impact. We hope that we'll be able to still be able to look in our rearview mirror and see how does it compare to years past. But we don't even know whether we're going to be able to make a comparison because of the data that we'll be receiving. So that's a big question mark as we move forward, especially since we are focused on growth. When that new assessment comes in, that's going to kind of be baseline data for a lot of those students. And so how do we work with them to say, we still want you to grow from year to year as we move through?
And this is just one assessment. We do several more assessments throughout the district, throughout the school year. We have a lot of common formative assessments. We have summative assessments, universal screenings. So we're continuously monitoring what the students do. What we shared with you tonight is one data point, but we do have several others, too.
Any questions for Dan or Pam?
Do we use any of these scores at the student level, for instance, to determine things like talented and gifted, advanced placement, post-secondary enrollment, those sorts of things?
This would be one criteria we use for TAG. We also use the common formative assessments that the teachers give. We use universal screenings. We use benchmark assessments. We also give specific tests that are, tests that are specific to TAG. We give the cognitive abilities tests for TAG. Trying to think of what else. There's several criteria we use for TAG, and we kind of have guidelines and procedures that we follow. And also, there is, teacher input is included with that. If we want to accelerate students from one, one grade to another, we actually have like rubrics that we fill out for that. So we do use Iowa assessments, but there again, it's only one small piece when we're looking at other programs.
I would say the same thing when we're looking at students in advanced placement courses or college-level courses. It's a data point that we would use with students as, as we sit down to see whether or not they'll be successful in those classes. We don't deny students from being able to enroll in an advanced placement course. If they truly want to, to try that, we will allow them to enroll in it. But it does provide some, some data as the counselors sit down with those students to say, well, this, this might not be in your best interest to take this class based on some of the data that we have right now, but.
Caveat to your question, too, is, you know, you look at the number of students that we have that are advanced, that are advanced proficient in a lot of those different scales. We are very fortunate, but our focus at times through this presentation, and it's due to the, the impact that the state places and the federal government places on the Iowa assessments, really sometimes focus on those low proficient students and how we increase them to, to get higher into their proficiency areas. We are very proud of, of the work that we do to focus on our advanced proficient students, our, our work with our talented and gifted students, or those students that are in AP courses, because again, we expect those students to grow, to be challenged. And through our multi-tiered system of supports, we really focus on not only what we do to support those students that might struggle, but we look at how do we take those students that are accelerated to continue to move them to deeper learning? And that's so important for us as a district.
Good question, Jeff.
I just wanted to make one point about, I think the slideshow's gone now, but it's okay. The, the graph that had, it was a bar graph and. You, you made a point about 2011, 2012, the, the test changing. And then a couple of years after. And then, a couple of years after that, the not proficient jumped up a bit. But then it really jumped down after that. And I just wanted to kind of correlate that to our transition to a professional learning community. That reduction, you know, after it jumped up, then it went back down again. That seems to me to be really in line, timing-wise, with our transition to a model professional learning community. So just to kind of make that point, that there seem to be some good things happening.
And I think a lot of it, that first question, what do we want our students to know and be able to do? We were really able to focus on that. And then what do we do if they don't know it?
Right.
Or if they already do know it, then it's that area that Andy was talking about before. Yeah.
I think it's a good point, because I think in that, the adaptations they made to the test were hopefully to align it a little bit more to the Iowa core. And so as we really worked with our, with our P L C collaborative teams to say, you know, what is that Iowa core and what's important for our students to learn, we honed in a lot more on those essential learnings. And so I think that that's reflected in the next years beyond that, that we had less students in that non-proficient, more students got into the proficient and advanced proficiency level. So when you look at last year compared to maybe the year before the assessment changed, we were in pretty good shape again.
Adrian and I had a chance to meet with some of our elementary teachers today, and over and over again, we heard, you know, we really know our students now better than we ever did before because of the P L C process.
Will the learning-based grading also feed into that? Is that the goal?
It really is. It's really honing in on what are those essential learnings that students need to learn in every class, at every grade level, and in every subject area, and be able to say, let's really work towards making students that they've learned that. And just because they've maybe turned in some homework doesn't necessarily mean they've actually learned what we want them to learn. So I think that work just, again, it focuses people on exactly what those essential standards that kids need at each grade level or within each course. And then we base the grading for those students on those essential learnings.
Any other questions?
Well, my compliments. I mean, it's great progress and growth. I have a question about how we can slice the data maybe a different way. I know you've got a pool of data, and I'm thinking about these tools. And we do compare very favorably, obviously, when we compare ourselves to the state and A E A. I mean, it's also reflected, I think, by the fact we have so many open enrollments. I mean, we're a district where families like to send their kids because we have a real quality education, and that's a compliment to what we're doing. I guess my question is, do we have a way to slice the data and take like, for example, the top 10 percentile of schools in Iowa in that data set and be able to compare ourselves and our progression against districts that are in a similar position as ourselves? And see how, because as I think about our kids and when they go out and compete, they're not necessarily going out to compete with even, you know, even the local, I think it's schools that are within A E A, or even, even schools within the state. I mean, they're competing on a national level. And so as many, and my goal is, thinking about that data is, can we learn from them? So if we look at those other leading districts and see how they are progressing, and I mean, this is a theme of how we can, you know, benchmark ourselves and learn from that.
Unless they change a few things that we can gather from that data, we can usually look at proficiency data from other schools. We can compare our proficiency data, but to be able to dig down into expected growth data, things like that, I don't know if that data is available. At least it hasn't been through Ed Insight and the state reports in the past. But it might be a situation, and again, are those students, are those schools willing to share their data with other schools? We don't know that. But that data is not readily available, as far as I know, to the level that we analyze that data in being able to slice it by the top 10% of our kids versus the top 10% of another school.
Right, and the relative change.
We have a resource that is becoming available, but I don't know how much they can dig down. And it's, is it Forecast Five, Andy?
Forecast Five, correct.
And that gives us some basic. I don't know how far they've come with that yet, but.
And frankly, I would be happy, I mean, just as a start, if we, even if it was just aggregated, so we didn't, you know, we can't compare ourselves against Ankeny or something like that. It's, hey, just tell me where I'm at versus the, you know, the top 10th percentile schools in the state, or I guess I should say the 90th percentile schools in the state, and how does my progression compare with their progression? And then we can, you know, that's really our peer group, as we think about who we're trying to compare ourselves to.
In Forecast Five laws, proficiency, they haven't gotten down to the level, as Dan said, with growth yet. So that's where the challenge lies. But we have, it's just called our top 10 list that we compare to based on proficiency, and that's the, what we consider very high-achieving districts that have fairly similar dynamics that we have with our demographics. So it's going to be the Ankenys, the Waukes, the West Moynes, I'm trying to think.
College community.
Albies Polk. And those are the ones that we really kind of dipstick against with proficiencies, to be able to see based on each of our classes, where are we at, how do we rank, and whether or not we're seeing what we see as proficient growth, proficiency growth within each of those bands. But the growth component hasn't come into play, which we think is probably the most important component, because when you look at every student every day, every single student, skill by skill, you want to make sure that you are growing those kids at the level that you grow. And that hasn't come to fruition yet as the state data collection component.
Last year, we were able to do that with our FAST assessment for reading. They've changed from the Iowa tier to FAST bridge this year, so I'm not sure if we're going to be able to continue that. But we were able to pull each grade and then compare Cedar Falls to the schools that Andy mentioned.
And we mentioned that a little bit when we gave the report on A C T earlier, is that it's difficult to get that data because it's not readily available.
And then, when we move to the new assessment, and it kind of broadens the individuals that are taking our districts, states actually that are taking it, will there be some information from those districts that we can, or those states actually, that we can possibly? And again, to your point earlier about not comparing, but at least data points that we can look at.
At this point, I don't, I don't know what kind of access. I did hear that Utah is taking this assessment and that they may do a presentation to a group of people this summer. If it goes that far, it's my understanding that they've just given a notice of intent right now, the actual contract is not actually signed. So I just don't know.
That is the hope.
Okay.
The hope is we can kind of do some more universal benchmarking as we move forward. And that was one of the, kind of, it wasn't a major goal of the group, but it was at least kind of a subset, so they could at least start doing some more comparative data. We'll have to see if the states sign releases for that and provide, hopefully, that data out, but that would be the hope.
Okay.
And the other part of that is that, you know, the new assessments are supposed to be much more aligned to the Iowa core. Well, our Iowa core standards may be different than other states, you know? So whether the test is going to be much different than Utah or another state that might be taking it, we don't know, because it's supposed to be aligned, that's one of the requirements, is aligning that assessment to our Iowa core standards, so.
Thank you. Good report, great questions. Thank you, Dan and Pam. Okay, moving on to the approval of the health service contract. Mr. Nusker.
Well, I guess I can start. If, this would not be the right PowerPoint, by the way. If, recall with the board that we have a contract with Blackhawk County Public Health for nursing services. We've had that contract for probably six or seven years. That has been a very advantageous and collaborative agreement between both parties. But unfortunately for the district, Blackhawk County has, wishes to sever ties with us for a variety of reasons. And so we are in a situation where we need to look at what we're going to do for nursing services for our staff and our students as we move forward. We did look at three different providers that would continue the contractual arrangement that we currently have with those providers, as well as researched the possibility of bringing the nursing services back in-house. One of the three providers that we talked to about issuing those contracts chose to drop out. And so we were basically left with proposals from Covenant Mercy Health, as well as Unity Point, as well as looking at pulling it in-house and working it ourselves. There was a little bit of misinformation in the courier, and I want to make sure I get that clarified here this evening. The current contract that we have with Blackhawk County Public Health for their school year is for $188,303, and that is from July 1 through December 31. But it really, in reality, is really about four-ninths of the total amount of the contract. So if you were to analyze that contract, it would be just over $405,000 for the entire year. And then the contract or the recommendation that we're making with Covenant Mercy Health is for 500, and I don't have the exact number in front of me, but that is an 18-month-long contract. And so if you were to annualize that, it would be $389,352 for the year. So you can see that it is approximately 20,000 less than the budgeted estimate that we had with Blackhawk County Public Health, should we have had that contract for the full 12 months. The contract that we've worked out with those gentlemen, basically exactly the same as the services that we've had with Blackhawk County Public Health. Nothing would change, the same structure is still in place. We had a meeting with the majority of the nurses and the health assistants last week with representatives from Covenant. And we're very, very honored that, and pleased that Covenant's willing to take over our nursing services. And our recommendation to the board is to approve the contract with Covenant Mercy Health for the next 18 months for health services for our students and staff.
Thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the health services contract?
I move that the Board of Education of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the nursing contract agreement with Covenant Medical Center for services between January 1, 2018, and June 30, 2019, as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Orbus. Do I have a second?
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. Do we have any questions or comments regarding the nursing contract?
This comes out of, this comes out of the general fund.
Correct.
So this is, in our world of all these different buckets, of which were restricted, this is the same one that we use to pay the teachers, to pay our, pay our staff and everything. And this is, this is part of a service that we, obviously, we need to provide to our students, but it's, it's coming out of the same one as we employ the teachers and pay the teachers from.
That'd be correct.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just wonder, we will have the same number of folks that are working, and those people have been given an opportunity to continue on? Is that what I understood you saying?
Go ahead.
Yes. Both questions.
Okay.
In fact, it's been a great dialogue, as we've had conversations with Covenant, as well as other outside vendors. And certainly, our intent and our desire was to continue the level of service that we have for students. Now, this is notwithstanding the addition to Aldrich that will be coming up here in eight months, nine months. So this is just to make sure that we are looking at our current buildings with our current level of staff. And this is something that we, when we had conversations, both internally and externally, we said, we are very pleased with the service, the staff members that are working in these positions, and we would like to retain them all. And that's something that our intent is, and certainly Covenant's intent is, is to have all the people that are currently working in these positions to continue on in those positions.
Good. Any other questions?
Yes. Will their compensation for these health services workers be comparable to what they're currently earning?
Yes, and that's what's extremely exciting as well. And that was part of, we had a very productive and positive meeting last week. And certainly, the commitment was that everybody's going to, nobody will go backwards within their current pay scale and pay rate, and that's exciting as well. And, you know, it's a testament back to Covenant, I would say, because they were focused on, how do we provide a community service for our community as a whole? Because we hope that our students are going to be, you know, community leaders in the next 15 to 20 years. And I think they looked at this holistically and said, we want to provide a community service, which is tremendous.
One other question. Will we have similar control over staffing of those positions as we've had in the past?
Yes. Absolutely no change from the arrangement that we have at Blackhawk County in that regard as well.
And we've always had a tremendous dialogue, and Pam could speak to that, but she is typically the person that has been working hand-in-hand with Blackhawk County, and we fully expect that to continue on with Covenant. And certainly, that's, it's a partnership is the way that we approach that and having that dialogue about how do we best serve students with the staff that are employed.
I know that students and parents are always appreciative of that consistency, so that when kids are, they see the same staff, they can have that, those conversations when they're not feeling well or whatever. So we appreciate that. Thanks for taking that time and energy for us.
That was so important for us, too, because as our nurses, our health assistants know our students, know our parents so well, and we want to make sure we can continue that. And again, testament to Pam and her leadership that she's provided, working with the nurses, to Covenant and their passion, and certainly our staff and parents.
Eric. Jenny? Any other questions regarding the nursing contract?
No, thank you.
All right. Do I have a motion and I have a second?
I have a motion. I have one. I'm good.
I think she was called.
Okay, all right. Sorry. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to the approval of the S B R C application for modified allowable growth. Mr. Nusker.
Okay, this is our annual request to the School Budget Review Committee for modified allowable growth after enrollment count date. And it basically is broken down into three parts. The application, I believe, is in your board packet, but what you have on the screen is summary of all that information. Certified enrollment, our increase for this year over last year is zero. And so there's no additional dollars that are available for modified supplemental amount for increasing enrollment.
And as we've talked, I think about a month ago, our certified enrollment is staying even, the number of students served in our seats is going up, and that's the challenge that we face. So certified enrollment accounts for students that are resident students, students that could be served outside of our district that might live here, but the number of students that we serve that either are enrolled, tuitioned in, sometimes due to family circumstances or in our system is different from our certified enrollment. So that's the, one of the challenges that we have.
Looking at, I was looking at the numbers today, and it's a little unique how we have the same number of students or more students in our chairs in the school, but our certified enrollments now, and it's the kids that are open-rolled out or kids that were tuitioned out that were the big changes were. So, so back to the application. So for certified enrollment, it's a zero. For open enrollment out, we actually have an increase of 19 students. Now, I know I just said we really didn't have a change, but what, how this works is it's new students that are open-rolled out that were not open-rolled out last year. So this is a combination of kindergarten students that their parents have requested that they open-enroll out to another school district, or students that have moved into the district that have chosen to open-roll out, or first-time students who were in our district last year but chose to open-enroll out. Okay? So like I said, the net open enrollment out is literally identical to what it was a year ago. And then the other piece of this is for modified English-language learners beyond five years, we receive funding for those students through E L P, and we talked about that at the board meeting last month. And those are for years one through four. But if you have a student that goes into year five, you can recoup those dollars. And we had eight students that we served last school year, and you can see the amount of just over $11,400 additional dollars that we can, we can receive for that. So in total, we're asking for open enrollment out. That was not on last year's report of 125 to 29, plus. So our total request would be $136,970, in essence. And that, what would happen, based, if the board grants approval to this, we would receive additional spending authority for this upcoming, for the current 2017-18 school year. And then, with the dollars for that, well, we will address when we do budget, and talk about cash reserve levies and those sorts of things next March.
Okay, thank you, Doug. Do I have a motion to approve the SBRC application for modified allowable growth?
I move that the Board of Directors of the Cedar Falls Community School District approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee for increased allowable growth, for increased open enrollment, open enrollment out, and LEP instruction beyond five years for the 2017-2018 school year as presented.
Thank you, Eric. Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Questions or comments regarding the approval of the SRB application, SBRC application?
The comment that I would have is, again, this does not generate additional cash dollars at this time. It doesn't generate an additional tax increase. This is asking for authority. And as we've talked, and Mr. Nesker went through that last meeting, that the authority is really what drives the school funding formula, and it's the ability to generate those dollars through that authority that's important. So having a healthy authority and asking for as much authority as we can potentially receive, that way we certainly have flexibility as we look to the future.
Any other questions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you. Moving on now to the PEPAL, Physical Plant and Equipment Levy, 10-year plan report.
Yes, and this is me, and I am going to ask, please ask questions as we go through this anytime, and as the slide is up. Otherwise, there's just a lot of information here, and I want to make sure that it's going to be a time question if it comes up, because it's difficult to go backwards into the slides if there's questions later. So this is really just an informational report. It's an informational item for the board. We approved an extension to our physical plant and equipment levy, and that was last year, to have that run out for an additional 10 years. And that would go through 2028 for this physical plant and equipment levy. So this was put together, this 10-year physical plant and equipment levy plan, about a year and a half to two years ago, prior to us going to our community to ask for the extension. And this gives kind of a synopsis, especially for our new board members, but also our current board, or existing board members, to, just as a refresher for this plan. I think the most important aspect of this is to let the board know, our intent is to bring this back every year, annually, to review this, to talk about this, to talk about the process, to make sure that the plans and potential projects will be on everybody's mind as we go through the school year. First caveat, this is a really large document. So don't let this slide scare you, because you're not going to be able to see it, but this is just a slide to show you that there's a document that is online. It's a big spreadsheet. It goes out for the next 10 years across the top. It lists all the different projects down on the bottom, where you can see some of the yellow highlighting. And we'll break this down here as we go through this presentation, but I just wanted to let you know that the document is online. You can go into it in great detail, but the bottom line is, it is a big, big document. But for the right reasons, because we want to make sure that we're going through this in a thoughtful manner as we look at expenditures the next 10 years. The other component of that is, it has flexibility to it, because any time you look at a 10-year plan, we know that we're kind of guessing into the future, and we'll talk about that here in the next few minutes. So we-
And one other thing, any one of these items that's on this list will need to be brought back to the board for approval.
Yes, there's Iowa code mandates, board policy mandates, there's some spending thresholds that require public hearings, there's spending thresholds that require board approval, there's, so there's all those different components. You know, if there's a $5,000 carpet replacement, that does not rise to the level of bringing that to the school board. But again, the spending thresholds and all of those are outlined in Iowa code. Correct. So the majority of these projects will be brought back to the board, especially the projects that we call, and anybody would call significant projects. I'm working on my wait time, so I'm just-
[laughing]
So the process utilized, we first went through, what are our annual expenditures? And you can just see some of the examples. You know, as we talked about this, it was very difficult to come up with, how much per year of our overall budget will we utilize for annual expenses? It runs typically about 50%, sometimes it goes up to 60, 62% of the overall revenue we receive on, on annual expenditures. And you can see, though, that some of those would be bus rotation, our fleet maintenance and rotation. Some of it is our ongoing roof repairs and masonry repairs. You know, with multiple buildings, in fact, we have 11 buildings across our district that we, we own, that adds up quickly to make sure that you have preventative maintenance and roofs are maintained. Technology devices, maintenance of our grounds vehicles, our mowers, and our tractors, and all those other components. And you can see that our equipment for, for technology and security cameras is another big component of that. So to break that down, we looked at not only the projected annual cost, but the annual revenue, and we built that into projections and estimates, to be able to have an ongoing cost increase based on the revenue we receive, but also to plan out some of those ongoing yearly costs will have an annual increase, because it'll be more expensive to do business. So this is kind of hard to see, but this breaks it down along the top of fiscal years. You can see fiscal year 18, 19, 20, and this, again, goes all the way out to 2028. But then you can just see up on top, the estimated balance forward, and Doug does a great job every month talking about the balance forward that we have with PEPAL. And we know we bank some of those PEPAL dollars, because we asked our community for a $32 million bond, but we knew that there was $40 million of expenditures from once in sales tax, from PEPAL, to offset the cost of those buildings to our taxpayers. Then you can see, just going down, the projected revenue that we will receive, and we anticipate within that first top slide, a little under $4 million in revenue, and then those are the yearly expected expenditures. And the reason I talked about earlier, that there's some fluctuation in that, we don't rotate all of our devices equally, equally every year, staff devices is one of those, but we'd like to keep our staff on the same device every year for technology. So we, every three years, purchase new technology devices. So every three years, you'll see 540, 544, next three years later, it'll go up to, you know, $550,000 expenditure to rotate those, those staff devices, and that's built into our annual budget. And then, down at the bottom, you'll see the total number of expenditures on an annual basis. And again, you can see how that will fluctuate as an estimate. So we knew then, we would have projects that are important to accomplish, that are above and beyond our annual ongoing yearly projects. So we developed a weighted system to determine the importance of those, as well as a weightedness to those, when those would occur throughout the next 10 years. We looked at, number one, what is, is the educational improvements, those enhancements that we know will make an impact for our students in the classroom, for our staff within the classrooms, to improve educational value. We looked at safety improvements and enhancements, and what could be now seen as a safety concern that would certainly enhance that, to make our buildings much more safe, not only for our students, but our staff, as well as our visitors and parents. Then finally, efficiency. And that's a hard one to quantify, because we look at different efficiencies as sometimes being mechanical, electrical, but also we were looking at kind of human capital efficiencies, and what's going to make it more efficient for us to do business. And we thought that was important, to be able to try to weigh those out as we look holistically. And at times, it can be a process efficiency, as we look at what can be a building utilization for a process to make it more efficient. You'll see that as well. So once that was accomplished, this allowed a prioritization of different projects that we saw across the district, but it also allowed us then to assign different years based on that weighting, but also on our budget, because we wanted to make sure that we stayed within a very fiscally responsible budget the next 10 years, with a carryforward, to make sure we could accommodate and account for when a smokestack needs to be tore down, when we have an emergency that pops up that needs to be accomplished. And we have those in this day and age. So this is another slice of the overall larger budget. And you can see, at the top of this, we knew that a high school is very important, and we have down at other sources of funding. We had a lot of dialogue about that roughly a year, year and a half ago, as we talked about that as a board. On the left-hand side of this is different components, different projects. The numbers that you see, the 2,500, the 4,000, those are different project codes and different aspects. Then you can see the efficiency weighting, and then the averages based on those weights. Now, here is the caveat. As you go through this, you will see that there's different weightings that fall different times throughout the next 10 years. And in fact, you might see something that has a 9.3, that might be in year eight, 2026. But the reason behind that is, as we look at life cycle costs, life cycle expectancies, we wanted to make sure that those were built in at the right time, even though they could provide a high level of weighting, but it's not the time necessarily to replace that, because it's not going to make sense to replace eight years before the life cycle expectancy wears out. So then you can see just some of the budgetary confines that we put in. And again, we've been trying to highlight this and look at this, we have moved some things around. You can see, one of these aspects is a water main replacements, the fourth from the bottom. The original Hanson building has the original Hanson water line that comes off of North Fourth Street or Fourth Street. That faulted last year. In fact, we had to cancel school for a day at Hanson, because that water line collapsed. We fixed it. Our intent was to replace that this past summer, because of North, or the Fourth Street was going to be redone right there by Hanson. And we're looking at most efficient way to be able to replace that water line when the street was tore up, we could connect it much more efficiently. The city elected to fix the Fourth Street east of Hudson Road, instead of west of Hudson Road, and very good reasons why they did that. But this summer, they're going to replace Fourth Street, and then we're going, so we've pushed that water main replacement back. And that's a 10 across the board. We know that educational improvement, we can't operate our school without water. We know that for safety purposes, you need water, and for efficiency, that's something that's extremely important, because we can't have school without water. So that's why it's 10 across the board, but again, that was supposed to be in year one, but that's now pushed to the year, year two because of timing.
Can you, can, sorry to interrupt anything, but can you just explain really quickly, like, how you came up with the weights? Like, what, what's a seven versus a nine, and, you know?
Yep. We tried to run some dollar figures, and that's the best way to calculate the efficiency aspect, is we look at, what is the payback, and what is the turnaround for some of the cost components? That became very difficult, and we looked at the human capital component and process capital. So we tried to give kind of a rough cost estimate to that, to be able to look at comparatively, does it make sense? Safety was one of those aspects, where if there was something that we had a recommendation from our insurance carrier, or one of our staff members that have said, this is a safety concern, that we need to be attentive to, that rose to that level of usually a nine or a 10, because we knew that that was, needed immediate concern. Somebody from the outside, either an expert, our insurance carrier, or one of our internal staff members said, we need this corrected, we need it fixed, that, that rose to a high level. The educational component is another area that it's challenging to quantify that. So what we looked at that was from our consultants, our other experts, our internal staff, as we started to weigh projects, to look at what would be the educational efficiency of having flex spaces back at Lincoln, what is that versus keeping those static and not replacing those into flex spaces? We went through that and rated that as a high educational value compared to something that might be not as educational beneficial, like a sidewalk, and that would rank lower in educational efficiency and expectation. So we tried to quantify it as best as we could, but there are some things that you just can't quantify when it comes to educational quality components, if that makes sense. Yep. Thank you.
Good question.
There was a lot of dialogue around that. Trying to come up with those.
I bet.
So the overall, on those columns, so you've got the efficiency, and then the weight on these different columns, is there, is there a column, then, where you added all those up, and for our people with deep math backgrounds here on the board, to look at, is that on this, is that on this chart, as far as-
It is.
Where you add the, the three of them, times the weight, or whatever?
Yep, and you can see the, it would be the fifth from the left column, it just says weight, and it's where the green triangle's at, because that's the formula-driven calculation. So the first one, just because it was 10s across the board, we didn't, I didn't calculate that one, just came out to a 10, but the other ones, you can see where the numbers are at. And now, this goes on for an additional multiple projects, because this is really your partial year one, for some of the summer projects that we have that are, that are ongoing. However, as you go down, you'll see some numbers that have lower weights, you'll see some numbers that have higher weights, but they're later on in the project, because, again, of life expectancy and costs.
What is that first column?
Those are the state codes that go along with some of those areas, so our internal codes.
It's a, it's a expense coding numbers for us, and then I can use that to sort by that, because I have, when I develop budget, within that fund, I have to do it by function, and that's a series of function codes that help drop those dollars in the right pew.
Okay.
It's really irrelevant for the board, just because it's internal documentation. We kept it on there, just because sometimes people like to go specifically to what the budget code is, and look at that flying item.
So stated another way, after all the internal discussions, these are the, these are the projects that the, after discussions with all administration bubbled to the top, as far as being what the administration thinks are the most important projects for expenditures that we should consider for this school year?
Correct. Based on the weightings, based on our budget, based on the life cycle expectancy. Correct. Yep. And we brought that to the, the school board for approval, would have been about 14 to 16 months ago, and walked through the different projects and components. And if you pull up that slide, again, it was based upon the weightings, based upon the, the year in which those projects would be completed, and you can see in the building, obviously, OH is Orchard Hill, NC is North Cedar, LN is Lincoln, and each of those is coded differently. The ones that are district typically are going to be large district needs. As we look back on this, one of the things that I think we would have done differently, some of our switches and network upgrades, what we have realized, as we went through DDoS, denial of service attacks last year, which none of us want to live through again, I think server networks, network switches and routers would probably go up higher even than a nine, because of what we found out is, when you don't have a system, you don't have school. It just, everything comes to a standstill in this day and age. So, so, you know, those are some of those replacements and components that we have that are, that are ongoing now. So from that list, and we listed some of those upcoming projects that we know from the weightings, as well as for the, the work that was done, building the 10-year plan, here are some of the upcoming summer of 18 projects that we have on that, that PEPAL plan. One is the telephone system replacements. We have a very antiquated phone system across our district. We've piloted the system in one building, as well as in a couple other locations, that seems to work well. It's a voice-over IP system, and it allows us to have much more redundant services for our phone system. Seems like our phone system goes down-
Regularly.
Well, yes, at times, and it's just something that needs to be done, and we know how important that is for safety. Portable placement at high school from Southdale, so once Aldrich Elementary is done, and that's open, then there's movement from students at, to Southdale. That allows that portable at Southdale to be moved to, to the high school. Resurfacing of the track, that is one that rose to the level at a high level from the safety component, because of the, the challenge of our current track. Does that disaster recovery build-out with switches and routers is a, is a large one. This is part of our work for our elementaries that we have ongoing with playground equipment and resurfacing, the water main replacement that we just previously talked about at Hanson, and then also the flex spaces at Lincoln. The flex spaces at Lincoln, you'll see, didn't have a large efficiency, but they had- The flex spaces at Lincoln, you'll see, didn't have a large efficiency, but they had, as far as a overall ranking, it had a seven. But you'll see that the safety and educational improvement is, is a very high ranking for that from the previous slide. As we look at the summer of 19, we start looking at central services and that is our central bus garage, our, our central maintenance. And there's some ventilation needs, some equipment needs there that we have to update and increase. We know we have to do something with our bus garage and either look at an addition or renovation or relocation. Our bus garage, as we've talked about for multiple years in Cedar Falls, that, that is something that is the same size when we had roughly half the number of buses. And we know we're going to add probably three additional buses this upcoming school year. Fencing is something that's going to be done and then additional playground equipment and resurfacing. It's part of our overall plan. Some of our larger projects then, as we look out over the next six years, and I didn't include the ones in 2027 or 2028, but just some of the larger projects as we look out then, three plus years away. Included that bus garage addition renovation, we had that over multiple years. We know we're going to have to have some classroom additions at Pete and Holmes. Part of that, we'll have to tie into some of our life cycle costs with our swimming pool replacements. Our swimming pools date back to the last time we had a bond in Cedar Falls, which was 1976. So that was the last time we had a public bond previously than our elementaries that were approved last year. So that's something that they are at the end of their life cycle costs in, in what we would expect for them to last. Then we have carpet replacement built in. We have Hanson Classroom remodel, which is those original sections of the current first grade, current second grade and current third grade that have not been changed or adapted since it was originally built. And then some, some parking lot expansion at Holmes. At the top of the list, and this goes back to our previous slide, we know that the high school is on the top of the plan for multiple reasons, the educational opportunity, the growth, the safety and security, but also economic growth. Just two slides in here are two pictures from our current building. You can see our lower section, that's a bus duck, actually electrical bus duck going along the hallway there. And you can just see, you know, windows because of adaptations and changes to the building that might be covered up and walkways and accesses to lower areas. We just know that there are some efficiencies that we lack within that, that high school structure. So questions? It's a big presentation, I know with lots of information.
Questions for Dr. Patty or for Doug?
Did I understand that much of the playground equipment funding comes from PTAs or fundraising at individual schools? Is that, is that?
We typically, and Doug can answer that much better than I could, but we typically will split that. Typically, what we will do with our PTOs and PTAs, and it varies on the scope and the size of the, the different elementaries based on size. So sometimes typically our PTOs will fundraise anywhere from $30,000 to $40,000, sometimes more. In fact, we've had one of our PTOs that generated about $70,000 to help offset the cost of playground equipment recently. It kind of depends on that fundraiser and how much revenue they might be able to generate. But the cost for those playgrounds typically will be, you know, $200,000 to $300,000. And what we could afford would be much smaller than maybe what they would like to have there, so they always help offset some of those costs.
The cost of the playground equipment or the, what you see is actually probably the least expensive piece of it. It's, it's the safety padding and the concrete that's underneath the safety padding to assure that the children, when they're playing on that equipment, don't, don't injure themselves. That, that's really the more expensive part of this. And we've, we've been converting a lot of our playgrounds in that decade or so that I've been here, from the wood chips or the rocks to that. And, and it's, it's been less maintenance for the, for our staff. And I think the kids and the, and the teachers and the pairs and individual buildings appreciate the fact that it's, it's a lot, not near as messy. With wood chips occasionally, after a heavy rainstorm, you have little insects flying around. We don't have that problem anymore. And it's just overall safer environment for our kids.
That's a huge.
But it's not cheap.
No, I believe that after watching the Lincoln playground go in this past year, yeah.
That's a huge human capital efficiency, as we talked earlier, just not having to replace wood chips annually, not having to rake those out is just so much more efficient for time management than, than anything.
And I would want to comment that the parent groups across the district have been absolutely wonderful to work with. Just about every elementary school, we've worked directly with them over my tenure here at school. They've been great people to work with. They've been, they're looking forward to working with their kids and we enjoy working with them as well.
Does the amount of money raised by a parent organization affect differences in, in any of the school locations? For instance, if a parent group were to raise more money, does that enhance what they have?
That would be up to the individual parent group, but overall, I would say it's usually, it's been pretty consistent about 50/50. Southdale is, is a wonderful example. That parent group raised $70,000 or $80,000, but the district poured another $70,000 or $80,000 into that site. So it, it was about a wash. When you, it, it took a number of years to get that accomplished because when we had put the addition on Southdale, that was phase one. And it was a couple of years later before phase two kicked in. And so it, and, but in the end, it was, it was pretty close to an even Steven wash. Some of our elementaries, their parent groups don't have the resources maybe necessarily to, to do a complete 50/50 match, but we work with them to, I've been known to do an installment plan type thing to help them out and that sort of thing.
So you make it equitable?
Yeah, we make it equitable.
And that's, it's usually based on the number of students. And obviously, you know, if you, the number of students at Southdale right now approaches 720 students, you don't need the size of playground at North Cedar that you have at Southdale. So it's just different variations. And PTOs will help select what components they might want there. So you might see different components, but the same outcome for student activity and student use.
Like Lincoln's as a ninja warrior, like a.
Yeah, could, if we could put the slide back up of the 20, of the ones for this next summer. And I just, I think for us as a board, it's, it's important for us to just absorb this a little bit because, so this is what the administration has, has worked on. And for us as a board to say, you know, that yes, we think that these are the, what is there, seven projects there that are, that, you know, because administration will bring this back to the board, these individually and say, okay, well, here's the, here's the bids for, for doing this. And so I'm just looking at the list and I'm comparing it to the ones that bubbled to the top on here. And resurface the track wasn't on the previous slide.
No, because that was intended to be done two years ago. And then we just kept trying to patch it and piece it together. So it actually was intended to be done in fiscal year 2017. So that would have been the summer of 16. The life cycle of that has passed probably three or four years ago. And that's why it's, it's certainly risen to the level now because of just the, the danger that that track is in the shape that it's in. So what we have done, just because of patching and other things and overlay, we've gone through a pretty extensive process to look at the track. Does it make sense to resurface the track at the current high school? Knowing that the life cycle of a resurfaced track is about seven years, sometimes eight years, depends. Sometimes it stretches out to 10 years like we've done. Or do we look at building that track someplace else? And so we did a pretty in-depth analysis. And to look at building something at Holmes, which made the most sense, it was going to be about twice as much as resurfacing the current track. We know that if, and when we are able to get a new high school at the, the land purchase for that, we're probably looking at least five years down the road before that could be occupied at the, the minimum. So it doesn't make sense to try to look at building something on that site because there's so much grading that has to occur at that site. Then we look at Holmes and by the time you look at lighting and, and all the substructure and all the other components that you have to have and to attract to make it competitive and to make it safe, it was just so outside the scope of cost comparisons that that didn't make sense. And so I think, back to your question, it's not on the list, but it was supposed, it was on the list three years ago, but then it wasn't done in the old PEPAL plan.
Because of safety concerns, that's why you feel it's important to?
It's, it's definitely a safety issue. We patched the track about five or six years ago and we were told it would last three to four. And it, it definitely is a safety issue that we need to address for our, for our kids.
Okay.
And the, on, one of the things I would encourage just on this list is, so this is the list that was put together about a year ago. I don't, and this is my personal opinion, so the board, if somebody has a different opinion. I would see this as a living document. If you want to modify this every year, modify it every year because priorities can change. You know, we can see new things that come, come about, so.
I would tell you it'd get modified, it probably is modified monthly.
Yes.
Because we have little emergencies pop up.
And I think you alluded to that in the very beginning.
And that's what we always, we always talk to the board about reserves and the PEPAL. And I know, we talk about having a million dollar reserve. And I know a million dollars is a lot of money and I understand that. But if we're, you're going to be spending $150,000, give or take, for the track. We know that we had to replace a boiler and orchard a couple of years ago. That was $100,000. The bus situation we had last year, we had to buy two buses because one of them decided to catch itself on fire. That was another $125,000 or $130,000. That's why you have an emergency fund and we've dipped into that. But then we always try to replenish it the subsequent school year to bring it back up to that million dollar level.
Any other questions from other board members?
I was just doing a quick scan. I used to be able to find the PEPAL on the main website and tonight I can't. So I'm sure we will double check that.
We'll double check that and find that.
Double, usually is that the located at the bottom of the, all the homepages, so.
Yeah, we'll, we'll find that.
Eric or Sasha, do you have any questions about the PEPAL? Okay. Name Jeff?
Nope.
Okay.
So then just a question for the summer of 2019. I know that's out there a bit. And I guess just kind of a, I know the number one on the list is central services, ventilation and equipment. That's for the administration building?
That is the bus barn maintenance where our central kitchen is at.
Gotcha. All right. Very good.
Speaking of the administrative building, some of the board members will recall that we, we came to you a couple of years ago and we talked about replacing some roof tops and the boilers and some other things. And the pricing that we had kind of scared us off. Well, we've had not one, but two rooftops fail in the last month. So we basically have no air conditioning in half the building. And so we are soliciting pricing for replacing both of those units. And they may not raise to the level where they would become to the board for approval. But just to let you know that that's, again, another one of those emergency items that pop up that why we keep that extra amount of money as a reserve just for, just in case. So that you, you may be seeing that here in the near future as a, for that. But what you're talking about is it's for central services downtown, it's not for the admin building.
Yeah. I mean, I know that when we have that, not to open that discussion about the central services building again, but I know that when we are successful to have a new high school, we're going to find a district that we have some extra square footage around the district. And certainly the administration building would be one that would be maybe a surplus within our overall facilities plan. And to sort of, you know, to put extra money into that building, you know, might, is, I guess I wouldn't be in favor of putting any extra money in that building. I mean, we do have, even in, even if we're having trouble with the HVAC, our high school has trouble with HVAC. So, you know, it's, we're, we're going to have to limp along a little bit, I think, until we get to the point where we have our new facilities in place.
Yep, and we're looking at that as how do we be as cost effective as we possibly can to make sure that we have spaces that people can work in.
We weren't, we weren't, we weren't looking at, we were basically looking at replacing what we had. We're not looking at any enhancements.
Yep.
And I'm sorry, you guys could chime in here. The one last comment that I have on, just on the further out, I think it's, as we're looking at, you know, these, these bigger, you know, call them bigger nuggets out there between additions at Pete and Holmes and swimming pools. And, you know, those are some, some big ticket items.
They are.
That we, you know, I think that's probably another opportunity to engage our facilities committee and, and, and get solicit input from them as far as, you know, priorities and, and, you know, how do we deal with that? I mean, for example, swimming pools would be a great example. Is it, is it better to renovate those or put it at the new high school with just one? I mean, I'm just, I'm not, I mean, those are kind of, there's cost benefit analysis for the community.
And a lot of that is community conversations as well because some of these have impacts well beyond the school laws. And that's where, you know, we, we've always had the two indoor pools that we have operated and ran with partnership with the city. But it's something that, you know, as we look to the future and as both of those end their life cycle expectancy, how do we handle that community wide, correct?
Is there a possibility of a partnership similar to the tennis courts perhaps for something like?
We have a part, we have a partnership now with the city and our pool.
Yes, right.
Definitely. And I think that's something that you always look for those win-wins. How do we provide those amenities, but also make sure that we're helping to offset some of those costs in the most effective manner?
And once again, the, these projects will, the majority of these projects will come back to the board for approval before anything takes place.
Most of them with public hearings.
Yep, okay. Any other questions or comments? Good discussion. We need a motion to approve.
Actually, no.
No, we don't, just a report. Okay, move, we'll move on to item J. Thank you.
Yes, and this is me again. So this is an update of some boundary lines and some of our, the work that, as we have looked holistically at our boundaries and the work that we did back in 2015. And as I was looking at some of the, the dates, this is, I realized that there are five new board members on the board since we actually went through this committee work. So there's some historical data here. I'll try to be as short as I can and succinct as I can by providing that framework for everybody. But again, please ask questions as we go through this. So, we hired RSP, and that is our demographer that looks at our enrollment growth. They, they work with cities and, and school districts across the Midwest. They are extremely accurate and do a tremendous job as they, they look holistically. With that, they also plan boundaries. So they worked with Waukees and Iowa City and Johnston and a lot of growing districts across the state as they look at boundaries, how do you balance boundaries? Several districts across the state of Iowa actually look at their boundaries annually and those get adjusted annually. You know, some cities will say, or some school districts will say, you might live on this side of the block this year and you go to this elementary next year, even though you live in the same spot, you're going to go to a brand new elementary. We typically don't do that, but when we went through this process, we agreed as a board that we would look at this about every two years to make sure that they're accurate, up to date, and we're dip stacking them appropriately. So in 2015, this was the process, and this is hard to see, but a process that we went through with RSP. And the top blue is kind of the overall direction with the board. We had some community meetings, we had some dialogue with the school board. We, we looked at this as a, as a community-wide challenge as we look at what do we do for boundaries. So this breaks down that previous slide a little bit more succinctly. We held board meetings and these were all in 2015 and we had some pre-conversations as well at the board table. But in January 26, 2015, we had our first meeting with RSP to start talking about how are we going to look at our boundary? What is that committee framework? What are they recommending for work? Looking at our enrollment as well as where our elementary would go. This was all pre-bond. So this was before the $32 million bond approval, which was in 2016 because we wanted to be as transparent as possible to our community to let people know where their children would attend their, based on where they live across our community and based on where the new elementary would go. On February 9th, the school board met and we set three priorities based on the work done through this committee. And number one, we wanted to utilize our buildings as effective as possible based on their current capacity, based on their sizes and how they're best built to utilize for student learning. built to utilize for student learning. We wanted to look at the minimum number of students impacted, because we know that we wanted to keep that as low as possible, because that can be challenging and sometimes very emotionally charged when you look at shifting buildings. Then we wanted to make sure that we kept neighborhoods intact. So we looked at major roadways, major natural boundaries like rivers or pathways to make sure that we looked at neighborhoods, because we wanted to keep kids and families together. We had a June 1st work session, and then June 8th was approval. On the right-hand side, you'll see all the different committees, and I'll break down the committees here in a little bit. But we had multiple different committee meetings. We had a public forum that was held at Hanson Elementary. The committee came back together to look at all the dialogue and information that came from that public forum, and finally made a recommendation to the board that, again, went to the board for that June 1st work session, and then finally for the June 6th approval of 2015. We had a very diverse committee. We had three parents from each of our elementary buildings. We had two parents from each of our secondary buildings. We had our transportation director there because at that time, he is now since retired, but he had so much knowledge, in fact, forty, forty working years of experience in our district and knew every single home on every single street, on every single boundary, on every single impact for students, and just was invaluable. We had two board members, two community members, and then one building administrator. Doug, Pam, and I did attend all the sessions to be there to either help answer questions or to help ask questions at times, but we weren't voting members by any means.
Question on that, how did you select the parents that were going to be on those committees?
We went to each of our building administrators and said, based on, you know, parent involvement, based on your PTOs, based on who you know will be able to come to the table with knowledge about your, your boundaries, about your parents, and about the representation of those parents, we would like those people involved. So we then sent out emails. We had some people that, because of commitments declined, so we went back to those building principals and asked again, are there additional names? And then some, through dialogue, that's where the community committee members came on board, because there were some people that just said, hey, I'd love to be a part of it. So we invited them, even though they weren't a parent, they were still a good representation of our community. So, this was colored much more prettily on my computer, so there's some color transitions here, but the arrows, the one that points to the left is our current boundaries. The one to the right are the boundaries that were approved in 2015. So what you can see, there are basically changes to, from what currently are our boundaries to what was approved in 2015. That includes Aldrich, and that's the light blue in the bottom left of the right-hand map.
Looks green to me.
It's green.
But no, on the right-hand map, the new map, the green is Aldrich Elementary Boundary.
Okay, good. Okay.
So that's kind of a light mint green. So you'll see the light mint green, that's Aldrich, has some students that come from Southdale, because Southdale is overcapacity, and we know that that is a, a school that has more students than are designed to be there. It has some students coming from Lincoln. We know Lincoln is overcapacity. All the flex spaces, the collab spaces at Lincoln have been transitioned into classrooms and other, what used to be storage closets are some student learning spaces as well. And then some boundaries changed at Orchard Hill. So the Hanson, North Cedar, and Cedar Heights boundaries remain the same currently versus what was approved in 2015. And again, that's all based on enrollment projections, school building size, trying to utilize those three items based on the committee's recommendation to the school board that the school board gave as parameters. Building utilization, least amount of students impacted, and keeping neighborhoods intact. We have one recommendation this evening for the school board, and that is a boundary that you can see that is in, it's just to the north of the pink areas. So just to orientate yourself, the pink is Orchard Hill. The tan up on top, where you can see Hartman Reserve Nature Center, that is Cedar Heights. The blue is Southdale. And you can kind of see where that blue-yellow dotted line is. That is the current boundaries that we currently have. In 2015, right by College Square Mall, part of the College Square Apartments, because of what we looked at and saw as some enrollment trajectories, there are some turnover in homes that are occurring quicker in Southdale than are occurring right now in Orchard Hill. Our recommendation is to keep those apartments, which were scheduled to go to Southdale, you can see that little blue square, and to keep those in Orchard Hill. So what this does is, there's about twenty-five to thirty-five students that are there. It keeps those students attending Orchard Hill and not moving to Southdale, which is something that I think that would be appealing to them, because it keeps them there. We did that because, again, we wanted to keep whole neighborhoods to move over. But again, it's not a large number of students that it impacts, but it keeps that status quo, and it keeps the class sizes, at least as we look for next year at Orchard Hill into the following year at Orchard Hill, within that framework that we think is important. And those number of students, even though small, could push some of our thresholds at Southdale into some areas that we don't think are appropriate. So this is something that we're looking for approval tonight. It doesn't have to necessarily be approval tonight, but we think it's important as we look long-term. The impacts won't be, we don't think, emotionally charged, because all the other boundaries have been set going back two years ago. But allows us to communicate pretty quickly out to parents, just to now make sure that they know the changes, and allows us to make some plans. The principal at Aldrich is excited to start working with current fifth graders at Lincoln, as well as Southdale, to start talking to them about being leaders of, in sixth grade at Aldrich and starting some of those transitional components. Now, if you ever try to write a recommendation that's really convoluted and challenging, this is it. So the recommendation, again, is to approve the boundary lines that were approved in June of 2015, with the exception of keeping that small apartment, or that small square of College Square Mall apartments that currently attend Orchard Hill to stay at Orchard Hill, because they were approved June 8th, 2015, to go to Southdale, but our recommendation is to keep them at Orchard Hill.
So does, do all the new board members then know what's going to be moved, what's moving? Okay. Okay. And we will then communicate to those families as soon as it's approved, so that they can at least prepare for those changes?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, the great majority of parents have known this now for multiple years. It's just now making sure that everybody is solidified. I think the caveat to this all, this discussion, this was decided two years ago, and it was the committee's recommendation. If you look at the new map, again, right side, in the lower left-hand corner of that, the green area, which is Aldrich Elementary, that is a split feeder system. So what that means is, because we have three current elementaries going to Pete and three current elementaries going to Holmes Junior High, it was decided through a lot of dialogue and conversation that Aldrich would be split along the current attendance boundaries. So if you attend Southdale and go to Aldrich next year, you will go to Pete. But if you attend Lincoln and go to Southdale, you will attend Holmes. So it keeps neighborhoods intact as they currently are, but it splits the feeder system. And we did that to balance enrollments as we look at the junior highs, because it was virtually impossible to have four full elementaries attend one junior high and three attend the other junior high and keep those at the same size.
And then the high school, they'll all come back together?
High school comes all together.
I may have misheard you, Dr. Patie, but I think you said if you currently attend Lincoln and then go to Southdale, I think it's if you currently attend Lincoln and will be going to Aldrich, you will continue to go to Holmes.
Correct. Thank you for that. Appreciate that.
Any questions about that component?
One question I have is, do we have any sense of how that impacts foot traffic? Do we know? I mean, it would essentially be the same as it is now. Do we, do the parents have any issue with?
No. And again, we went through that process through the public forum and had a lot of dialogue two years ago about that. The good thing is, when we look at transporting students, we have the ability, if we look at an intersection and call that a dangerous intersection, then those students will be bused to that, that elementary. Currently, all the students that live on the west side of Hudson Road and some of those newer subdivisions, and again, I'd encourage everybody that might not drive out to the west side just to see the expansion of our community, currently are bused to an elementary, because we deem Hudson as a busy road. There's not walkways and crosswalks that are there. With the new elementary, actually, a lot of those students, that's going to be now a neighborhood school, that are going to be able to walk, gain access directly to that building. So there's hopefully going to be more walkability and bikeability with the current structure.
Good question. Any other questions? All right. Do I have a motion to approve the boundary presentation?
I move that the Cedar Falls Community School District Board of Education reaffirm the elementary and junior high attendance boundary lines established at the Board of Education meetings on June 8th, 2015, in conjunction with the opening of the new Aldrich Elementary School, with the exception of the area west of McLean Drive, north of Orchard Drive, and south of University Avenue, which will remain in the Orchard Hill Elementary School attendance area.
Thank you, Sasha. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second. Did any other comments or questions regarding this? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Item K on the agenda, the board committee assignments.
Yes. There was a Google Doc from the last discussion. We had a conversation about different committees and a summary, different kind of tentative meeting dates and number of hours per year, potential number of board members, and again, thank you for everybody filling that out. We finalized that on Friday, so we didn't have a chance to be able to put that into the packet. But it looks like, and we can get this posted, that everybody has signed up for roles. We have the, I think, no duplication as, as far as, you know, a quorum wants to be on one committee or another committee, and it looks like there's a pretty good balance. So, knowing that you don't have this in front of you, I don't know if you would want to have this approved this evening, but this, if it's not tonight, then it can be in November, but at least we can use this to hopefully start communication and start subcommittee meetings to get people together. But it looks like everybody has signed up, and it looks like there's some really good spots and good matches for maybe people's passion areas. So I'm really open to that discussion. Again, we just didn't get it in the packet due to some timing constraints, but hopefully, I know everybody's seen it, because we've been on it and typed in your names, but hopefully you're comfortable with, with how that has set out.
What's, what is the pleasure of the board? Is this a document that we can approve this evening? Or would you like us to bring it back? Would you like, do I have a motion to approve it?
Would it make any difference in how we proceeded over the next couple of weeks in terms of you?
It just allows us to get started.
The only thing I would like to do is to be able to get the board goal committee and the superintendent goal committee together, because I think that's, right now, our highest priority. When I look at the other committees, and I'm just trying to think of what's on the horizon quickly, I don't think we have a wellness committee or a board policy committee or a DTC, anything set here in the near future. So I don't think that there's a pressing matter. I just would like to be able to move forward with those. It's fine with me.
I think if nobody objects, let's just approve it. And we can all change next year.
That sounds good.
Do, does that sound like a motion?
That's a motion.
Thank you, Jeff. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Thank you.
Your attentiveness to that.
Moving on, to the superintendent's report.
Very short. ISAB State Convention again. Again, we have signed everybody up for that, so I appreciate that greatly. Within your packet, you'll see a kind of a one-sheet summary of our last year's mobility reports. We had about seven hundred and sixteen movements in district, out of district, intra-district, which is always kind of interesting to track and to map. November 27th, board meeting. We'll have an IASB follow-up just to discuss that session and what we learned, and we talked about that embedded within our board meeting, I believe. So we'll just have that part of that board meeting. We were informed tonight, too, November 13th is the next board meeting. There is a scheduled U and I basketball game that will start at seven, and that will go live as soon as they go live. So if we go past seven, it's still going to be taped, but it'll be shown later as a whole group. We won't say we were bumped, but we were. Priorities are priorities, yes.
Okay.
So I just wanted people to know that and be aware of that, that, again, nothing happened to their television. It just means because of the licensing agreements and things like that, the basketball game will go live.
And we can say that again on our November, at our November 13th meeting?
Yes, not knowing what that agenda will necessarily look like.
Okay, all right. Anything else?
No.
Okay. Do we have any questions or comments or concerns from board members? Go ahead, Jeff.
So Eric and I, this past week, attended a session at the high school in regard to learning-based grading, LBG. And I know, I don't, I don't know if any of the others of you got any feedback from it, but it was a, there was a, you know, certainly a group of concerned parents there that were very engaged and had a lot of questions in the regard to the direction of the district and where we're going at a secondary level. And so there's, I think, I think our greatest challenge at this point is communication, engaging, because I, I know we videotaped the session, so that's good for being able to go back through slowly and, and, you know, take down those concerns and. And so, yeah, I just think we have, I think we have a real communication challenge to tell people why we're doing this, why, why we think this is important, what's the impetus behind doing this, and certainly my encouragement would be that we, that there's another session in the, the session kind of got, had a, had a hard stop because of those orchestra concert coming, and so, you know, there were parents that I think felt like they had additional questions they wanted to ask, and there was a hard stop. But I think within the very near future to try and schedule another session, that's my input. I know Eric was at the session as well, so.
Yeah, and I would second everything Jeff said, and I guess to the, to the public, I'd, I'd like to add that, you know, there seemed to be a lot of tension in the room that night, but we're all trying to do what's best for our, our students. Parents have very valid concerns, and we're going to work with them to address those. But our, our staff are doing all that they can to do what's right for students. And it's solidly based on research, you know, this, so I just want, I want everybody to be aware of that, that we're all after the same thing, you know. So if we can help with communicating in any way, I'd be really open to, to doing whatever we can.
Agreed. And that's one of those aspects where we had scheduled a February meeting informational report to the board. We'll have to talk about moving that up, too, to make sure that we have board members much more informed and knowledgeable about this process and the research behind it, the why. And there's times where sometimes we believe, because we're so embedded in this work, that we've communicated well, that we've sent out information. And there's some areas that we need to improve in that. So that's another important area, and continue to have more dialogue with parents and conversations with parents as we go through this process. Because it's the right work. It's just a matter of making sure that now we look at this holistically, take concerns, help answer questions, help people through this process. Because we're lagging in some of these aspects. You know, with, with our focus on expectations for kids, for making sure that the application of knowledge is at the forefront instead of just maybe regurgitation of facts and information, how you apply that is crucial, and that goes back to those power standards and what we call our learning standards, to make sure that all kids can do that and apply that knowledge is important. So we need to go back. It's communication, it's dialogue, it's informational, open nights. And again, we, we thought we were communicating directly with people that were involved with pilot programs. We need to expand that much more widely.
Could I ask, do we feel the same for our staff? Do we think our staff are well-informed and are, are getting there anyway?
Yeah, in fact, we had a, a meeting this morning. I wasn't able to attend, but Mr. Conrad did. We have, of our secondary staff, and all by choice, about 100 individuals that are working through the learning-based grading pilot program. That's all self-selection. So, they, I think they're really engaged. It's really some of our staff leaders that have modeled this and shown why this is the right work and, and how it impacts students. And, and they are unbelievable when you look at what they're doing and how they're assessing students and, and what it's based upon and what they're asking students to be able to learn and showcase. So, I would say, yes, there's always room for improvement, because it is a change, and it's kind of a scary change. And that goes back to some of our parent feelings, some of our student feelings. So, we're, we're hoping to put some communication pieces together that model after other districts have gone through this in, in the past, and have some student voice, staff voice, parent voice about what this means and what it looks like. So, the question is, yes, we are, or the answer is, but there's also some trepidation too. There always is.
Sure.
I'll follow up on Jeff's comment, too. You know, we will have multiple opportunities for parents to hear from teachers, from administrators, from our instructional coaches. We're still in the, you know, implementation stage, moving towards things. And I know next week at parent-teacher conferences, we'll have a table set up where they can address questions to our instructional coaches, our administrators about, about the learning-based grading process, what it is, and those kind of things. We want our teachers, of course, to focus on the progress that their individual students are making, but in terms of if they have questions about learning-based grading and what it is and, and why is it important and so forth, we'll have people available that night to have conversations with people as well. But we'll continue to do the larger group things and put out information to parents via email. We're developing some, some videos and some things like that to really inform parents of what we're doing and the why.
Good. Any other questions or comments before the board? PTA, PTO visits by the board.
I think that's important. I think that'll be probably a board goal, just because I think that's traditionally a board goal, to, to have board members visit PTOs, PTAs, but also to be able to visit PLCs and, and buildings. So, I would hope that we can get that going soon with those subcommittees.
I am happy to put together the list of dates for all of the PTAs and forward those to you, so that you can then work your magic in finding dates at work.
Perfect.
Okay.
Second.
Yes, and, and I'll start working with some of our building leadership teams, look at PLC dates and times and building visits as well.
And it'd be, I, I know we had a small but great group of parents that attended the junior high, high school. Jeff, you were, you and I were there. Jenny might have been there. Joyce was there. We attended that, because the junior highs only meet three times a year. It's, it's getting minimal, right, for their planning. So, it'd be great if we could maybe find a date for the high schools and the junior highs together again.
That'd be good.
Thank you, Suzie. All right, any other questions? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
It's been moved. And do I have a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you.